The reading of our meeting order. All calls.
Ames.
Here.
Porcher.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Tuch.
Yes.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of a journal for meetings. The members of our last meeting, I trust, members have had a chance to review that since asking.
I have one slight question to make on page 95-1. Under audio participation, Rhonda's last name is Lurty. L-U-R-T-Y.
Do you understand why I didn't catch that? It's hard to hear.
Yeah, it is.
Is that your only correction?
Yes, it is.
Do you...
Yes, sir.
With this direction, is there a second? A fourth?
Roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Porcher.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Tuch.
Yes.
The Works of the Committee, Mrs. Patton.
Thank you, President Delano. The Utilities Committee has five items on tonight's agenda. Item number three is the second reading of an ordinance appropriating $20,000 for the extension of a water line, an eight-inch line to the east side of North Bridge Street at Hilton Road. This was explained at our last meeting, and we'll go through the third reading before we vote on it. Item number 11 is appropriating $43,770 for coating the clarified mirrors and the interior at the water treatment plant. We've received two estimates on this. The lowest and best was $43,770. The new coating does inhibit algae growth, and will extend the life of the clarifier. And this coating is good for 20 years. This is a plan to upgrade at the water treatment plant, and this legislation will also build all three grades. Item number 12 is appropriating $50,000 to the at-water wells under 20 and 22. In half, we would drink at one well a year. We haven't done this in the past few years. We were on a seven-year rotation schedule. We are required by EPA to have all seven wells covered. This rehab of two wells helps us get back on that seven-year rehab schedule. The activity of these two wells has dropped between 25 and 50 percent. This legislation also builds all three grades. Item number 13 is adopting and accepting revised city alcohol and drug testing policies for the transit department. This policy was revised and required by ODOT. The federal Department of Transportation and ODOT regulations have been incorporated into this policy. The law director has written a view of this. This needs to be adopted by July 31st of 2015, so I will pass away the three readings on this in passing tonight. Item number 10 is appropriating $150,000 for emergency repairs to the flat sewer section of the East Water Street Sewer Line. At this time, I'd like Richard to... You told me, Director, Richard Johnson, to step forward and explain what has happened and what needs to be done.
As you probably all know by now, we have a freighter on East Water Street. We'll turn about two weeks later after the type of storm that we're going to appear on. Long story short, we have a 21-inch sanitary sewer main that basically is the main service line that covers all the flat area from about Bridge Street, probably about Eighth Street to the east, and from about Seventh Street to the north. So it covers a handful of the different portions. What happened, long story short, again, the hydrogen sulfide that is transported into the concrete rain there at the moose, I don't want to give you the background on that if you don't recall or remember, but we have a hydrogen sulfide problem from the water and from the city stepping on the line too long forward across the side of the grid. So that gas, of course, goes up the line, and it reacts with the concrete and causes the top of the pipe here. And that's the situation we have there. It's at Water Street and... We have 15 foot deep hole in the sewer line. We have been working on that section of the line here for the last two weeks for the summer last, the summer Saturday, including... But just about have everything cleaned out. To give you an idea of what we have there, I'm going to start with it last week, two weeks ago. We had the asphalt with a hole there, about like that, and you look underneath the asphalt and it's absolutely nothing. The hole, the cavity was big enough to fit at least one car in, it was covered about 1/2 feet deep. What happened is the sewer line had given way and sucked all the gravel and everything above it down into the sewer line. So that's the reason we're spending so much time in removing all of the debris and gravel that was up in the sewer line. The procedure is, before we can repair the line, which in this case is too fragile to repair, we'll probably have to remove a good portion of the line all the way down to Mount Logan School before we find anything reliable that we can connect. So what we're looking at is re lining the sewer line. If the committee would be glad to explain that, if any of them wants to know about it, but we had done the re lining of some of our sewer lines in the area. In fact, it's the same line. We did that probably about kind of 12 years ago, if I recall. Obviously, very successful. This was one section that at the time we did not reline because it was in a sufficient enough condition that the sewer line was not necessary at that time. So that's what we're looking to do, is re line this. It costs $100 to $125 per foot. That's my preliminary estimate, and that's the reason I asked for $150,000 because we had about 1,010 foot of sewer line that we would like to reline. Again, before we can re line, we have to be able to clean the sewer line out. We have to be able to take the video of the sewer line, which we've not been able to get our video cameras through because there's so much for in-line. But we were able this afternoon to get our camera through, and we did discover another void very close to the existing hole that we have. We think we can work with it. I think it's in the hole that we have, but we haven't physically discovered it with our camera. It didn't came in the tunnel. Once we get the video of the line, then we send it to our contractors. We have two lining, or re lining contractors who we can get proposals from. But again, we believe if they see anything, they have the attitude. So again, we should have the video in the next day or two of the line that's being opened, and hopefully then we can ask them from the re lining companies. This week, that's what the price goes, and hopefully they can work in for us their schedules so we can get this line down, and the following will be prepared. Does anybody have any questions? And again, if I can emphasize, and I think it's happening to emphasize this, I don't think I need to tell anybody this, but this is an emergency. We have an emergency shutdown at any time, and more of this will collapse.
Thank you, President Delano. I'd just like to add two things. One, I will ask for the ten vehicles that passes tonight, but I'd also like to thank Bob Gillum because he has lent us his large Tranco, and Dryer and Mallor, our equipment supplier, has lent us the high-power jet nozzle. So that has saved us, just having access to the Tranco especially has saved us a lot of money. And if there was a issue with this, please run it through.
Thank you, Mrs. Patton. Your support? Your call.
Safety Service Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Both are at second read. One is declaring certain vehicles obsolete or not needed, authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell said vehicle simultaneously to purchase slash lease of three new police cruisers. This is to allow us to do a trade-in. The second item is item number six on your agenda. It is also at second read. It is to appropriate funds, and it's actually to reallocate some funds and appropriate at the same time. I'll explain this in a little more detail. For the lease of, and outfitting of three cruisers for the police department. What we have with us is a revised ordinance, and before we can move forward with that, I would need to ask if we amend by substitution, because this is different than what we saw at the last council. So I would like to make a motion that we amend by substitution.
Is this item number six?
Item number six, yes.
Is there a second? Mrs. Gray, second. Roll call on the motion to amend by substitution.
Ames.
Yes.
Porcher.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Tuch.
Yes.
Substitution is not approved.
Okay, now, the difference is, last week's...
Yes.
The way it had been written would have led to believe that we were allocating new monies in that $42,503.57, and actually we're reallocating funds that were already appropriated for the purchase of one police cruiser. And we're going to use those funds to, along with the trade-in, to purchase three. And then also, down here, you'll see that we're going to appropriate $845.80 for unappropriated law enforcement trust fund to go towards the outfitting of those three cruisers. Any questions? That concludes my report.
Mrs. Gray. Thank you, President Delano. The Human Resources Committee only has one item on tonight's agenda. Item number seven is the second reading of an ordinance to authorize the administration to hire two additional police officers and to appropriate, according to the agenda, $76,920 for salary increases. But if you will look in your packet, there is a substitute ordinance, and I would like to make a motion at this time to amend by substitution the ordinance that has been placed in your packet. There's a difference of $317.46 in what we initially received and what we have received tonight for tonight's agenda for legislation. At this time, I'd like to call on Chief Washburn to come forward and to give us a little bit of background on just exactly what this amount represents.
Mrs. Gray.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, this is motion. Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Tuchel. Roll call on the motion to amend by substitution.
Ames.
Yes.
Porcher.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Tuch.
Yes.
I'd ask for Chief Washburn.
I figured this up with the hourly rate shift difference in maintenance duty. I have pro-rated uniforms, holiday pay, health insurance, life insurance, unemployment benefits. The reason this is an emergency is 2012 state legislative changes to service forms. Tests are due for one year after the first person is hired. The first person is hired off that last test to apply for a course, means that test expires. By hiring the two guys now, we're going to save $54,000 in academy training costs and salary benefits while they're creating the academy. As everyone knows, we're 16 months from shy upon essential authorization. Last week was a spread of busy week. One case hasn't been remedied yet involves a sexual assault, not that I should have picked up. Some of these assaults are pretty severe. Some of the customers in the mayor know about it, and anyone else to know. I'll be on the phone as much as I can, but we've had a rash of break-ins, cars, residences. We did make an arrest this morning, a break-in. We saw two hires search once over the weekend. One of those was all in the rest of the property. We did locate some property that was sold along the right hand of the city garage. So we're making progress, but we just... You might have a question?
Thank you, Chief Washburn. We'll book this time up for twice a week if we need to jam on. Please just wait. Thank you, Chief Washburn. Your turn. Because of minor changes to items, the legislation to items six and seven will allow the container to set free. Next, the view report, Mr. Tuchel.
Thank you, President Delano. Item two is the second reading of the ordinance to authorize the addition of a full equipment located in this city to the city's primary insurance policy, annual cost of $6,670.5%. In the trick, access and access offered was discovered that none of the technical full equipment throughout the city was covered by our estate insurance policy. Fortunately, the motor set present by our controller was insured. It was determined that if the uninsured motorist or an active nature stored on our controllers, he caused as much as $1,000 in replace. We insured our controllers for $6,262,500 of the wire investment at the appropriate time, with the request to wait to free rehole. As a fact, we waited two weeks until something happened, and it was four to three, and I did pay a duty. Thank you.
Mr. Tuchel.
Thank you, President Delano. Engineering Committee has three items on the agenda tonight. Item number one, authorizing the blueboard school signings around the two closed schools on the west side of Penn. Item number eight, issuance of bonds in an amount of $2 million to do screen improvements. The Engineering Committee did hold another meeting on this item, and there is concern that the amount of work will not be done in 2015, but if not used this year, there will be money available to start earlier in 2016. Item number nine, this item has to do with the angle parking, traffic pattern changes on South Main Street, and that has to do with the pile-out building, so hopefully we get that going. That concludes my report.
Chief Washburn. Other than you, what's... Miss Banks. Thank you, President Delano. Development. Development has no items on the agenda tonight, but I'd like to report an assignment 1557. This was a request to discuss requirements for downtown sidewalk use permit program in Chill Call. This came about because Mr. Gimble of Fire and Stone Pizza Rio wanted to be able to serve alcohol at tables outside his restaurant. The Ohio Lip Commission requires that Mr. Gimble have permission from the city of Chill Call to use the sidewalk right-of-way as an extension of his business. At the June 25th Development Meeting, Mr. Gimble asked if the police department would be able to comply with the Ohio Lip Commission's requirement. The committee determined that the requirement could be fulfilled by obtaining a letter from the mayor, giving permission, as has been done in other cities. I drafted the letter and sent it to the law director. She said the letter was satisfactory. The mayor signed the letter, Mr. Gimble signed the letter. In addition to the permission letter, Mr. Gimble has provided proof of $1 million liability insurance. He indemnifies the city of legal responsibility should an accident occur in the designated area. He divided the site plan and also provided a copy of the expansion and use form required by the Ohio Lip Commission. A copy of this paper will be stored at the Building Department. As a result of this last week was for Lansing and Bubbs. Bubbs time out. Bubbs. Okay. Mr. Lansing, if Bubbs time out, call me if you wanted information about how he could also obtain permission to use the sidewalk right-of-way for expansion of his establishment. I went to him and supplied the necessary paperwork and details to meet his partner's business. Because we were able to help Mr. Gimble obtain the necessary permission, a sidewalk permit program is currently unnecessary, and so this assignment will be taken out of committee per my recommendation and Mr. Florida U.S. Bureau. I can conclude my report. Thank you. Miss Banks. Visual report. Mark T. reports the visual report. Mayor, your say?
Thank you, President Delano. Last Friday, the Engineering Meeting, Airborne Partnership Program Task Force, total of 20 representatives from various state agencies down as a part group, very preliminary scope. But things that were established was the steering committee, which is already in place, to determine the next steps of the program. And the funding that's come to the table so far is to hire a coordinator for the task force coordinator's responsibilities, the cost management, and grant. So we'll determine what we go next in the next meeting, the next couple of weeks. Thursday at 9:30 in the mayor's conference room, the Control Water Utility meeting, taking away the exceptional ring call we've had in recent months, and the ability of the city to discharge excess water from the copies of streets is an effective task. So we'll be talking about the functionality and departmental responsibility and funding mechanisms for that utility in this region. We are in process to raise wage bill curves, to call on the union contract negotiated between one-year, three-year term, a one-year wage definition. This was, this was all done, seeing if the tax levy improved. And that was primarily with the FOP and the IMF, determining they would have a three-functioning fire office and other command. So we are back in wage negotiations, and we got a plan, which will give you the cost of that once that's been completed. Watching that, the paving is scheduled for this Thursday and Friday. It's going to take a few days, but that will be completed. Also, the Rosco contract has been extended from the June 30 deadline. Remember, we have a fiscal year for the Rosco program at mid-year, not the calendar year. They extended that to September 30. It is going out thick, and we still have coming requests for legislation to allow us to enter into the contract with that. Finally, I'd like to talk a little bit about the, an incident that happened last week with a police department and a subject with an air rifle. Some circumstances that involved in that scenario was a person wearing a mask, went around late night on the city streets, air rifle, it looked like an AK, AK-47 or AR-15, AR-15, right there. Subject pointed that rifle at this officer when he approached. Potential for even being a clean Cincinnati type incident was negated, only hope resolved for his officers and their training. Personally, I commend the police department for the assistance, for their training, in a very ugly situation, including putting their lives at risk, who were shooting. So good job, Dr. Shing. I think that's a testament to the training of all nations and leadership on this. That's a good one.
Senator T.
Thank you, Madam President. Part of your items on the agenda tonight, I would echo Councilman Tuchel's quest to wait for free people on item two. I think that's responsible to ensure that particular traffic closed around the city of value, because potential savings is that one is expensive. What if they have the city right away? Item number six, just echo what Councilman Paul said. Oftentimes, you could afford lease in government. This is more of a lease-to-own where the final payment would be $1, rolling the vehicles. This isn't a traditional lease where the vehicle is returned at the end. Basically, the reason the reallocation was necessary is to get past the capital less at the beginning of the year, have one cruiser on it, even modify certain purchasing free. And I think the initial appropriations just covers the balance, so I think that's the responsible. I did ride along a couple of weeks ago, and was, everything that I've heard about the front ends of some of those cruisers, mistresses are loud, and vehicles are major. On to number eight, I'm sorry, number seven. This, this came back with more detail. Chief Washburn worked on a very thorough breakdown of salaries, probation, benefits, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I also talked about the amount of overtime spending as a result of not having these two officers. There's also a scenario where, I believe it's the case, these officers would be ready to go much sooner than should we wait for enough of this, potentially people who actually have to be trained, etc. We found that our last year of hiring should be basically paid for the last year. So while this appropriation will go against that appropriation total, and it does not have anything to do with the levies that have passed, this is this year's one, I believe it does, because it should have some support, we can have some savings long-term and make the city safer. So I would also support Councilman Preys waiting for a period of time. Item number eight, we had a good follow-up Engineering Committee meeting, good questions asked. I went to a bond council, and it's done the underwriting, borrowing. In summary, the conversation was basically, should we borrow 1 million now, come back and borrow 1 million again in five months, or should we borrow it all now, so we can get done and have it ready to spend as next year begins. One of the things that Agent Yourtop Day pointed out is that by putting it out early, blocking the crisis earlier, which gives us some leverage, and we're also saving on cost of emissions because we're going to go out tomorrow and pay bond council. And like we've talked about for the past several years, interest rate volatility right now would probably represent something between 1% and 2%. We've heard earlier recently about a few days back, so this was primarily a move to give the taxpayers what they voted on, get more of it as quickly as possible, and really avoid further damage as well. We don't borrow money to get started on the roads. The reality is, it would be towards the end of next year before we had any exposure to money to make, to begin any bids. So really put a more into spring of 2017, which is a long, long time. So I would support that. Finally, as some of you were here in the much review session earlier, the Open Gov website is live. I'm trying to pull it up at the end of the review session. I left it on my phone. It doesn't work, keep it a minute. It's just very popular though, but check it out. Check it out. Play around with it. Email us at the office questions. It's chillacoffeeOH dot OpenGov dot com. And website, city website.
At this time, we'll move to audience participation. Just a reminder that when we step to the microphone, please give your name and address. Councilwoman produced speaker of five minutes, and each topic to fifteen minutes. Who would like to address council this evening?
Good afternoon. I'm Officer Chris McGowan, 28 North Kings Street, Philco, Ohio. First off, in the presence of the President, I'd like to thank Ms. Gray for her help in trying to get the, I guess, legislation awarding on the, like councils and to vote for manpower and the cruisers. Cruisers badly need it like other feedies out there. They've, the rotation has dropped out of whack several years ago. Because of that, it's not only the city, the police department that hurts, but the other agencies within the city doesn't get there. Any down cruisers in the police department? So even their cruisers are former cruisers who are probably in bad shape with this repair, just like ours are. Unfortunately, we can't, we won't be able to pass on our cruisers because they're already bad. Second thing is Chief Washburn mentioned about how crazy the city was last week. I'm a patrol officer. I work the street on third shift. Come right along with us, second shift, third shift. There's people out four o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning. You wouldn't believe the amount of people outside. Cars, people. We're handling a lot of calls on third shift where you just kind of need to be on that. I don't know why, the prime rate. I've done this job eleven years now, and the prime rate in cities has to go up this year, discussing some of the issues for this, but I want to agree. So please ask the way the three people this evening, both hired, the manpower that definitely helped. The two that are potential hires that this does pass tonight are already OPADA certified. So what happened last year was we had a gentleman that was laid off of the police constraints, and unfortunately, the inability to bring him back behind the banner. He had to make a tough decision. He went back to the US Coast Guard. So his OPADA plus whatever he was having provided, plus however much the city paid him just to go to school was a lot of money. And we lost that money unfortunately. So these two people that we have ready to go, they're OPADA certified. They just need to do the field training. And with the passage of the treaty, hopefully, it was going. At least, it's not going to solve the problem, but it's a foot in the right direction. And we made baby steps. We'll get going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer McGowan. Next.
I'm Alan Davis. I live at 370 Bravely. I noticed in the paper that we did the tax budget, so I thought I'd come and just talk a little bit about budgeting principles. I know there are a few guys who are familiar with them. So it's auditor, PD, so it's nothing new. But four principles that are very important that we follow on a regular basis is one, we have to maintain adequate reserves. The state auditor's office has definitions, a couple of definitions. And I'm, Luke's, you know, aware of those. The only way you can maintain adequate reserves is the second principle, and that is we have to have a surplus every year. And that's how we replenish our reserves when we're below them. And that's how we maintain them when we're at them, you know, when the special things come up. The third is that in every budget, we need to adequately budget for our property, plant, and equipment and infrastructure. And then the fourth one is that a solid budget is based on a good projection for the current year as the starting point, not off the prior year budget. Now, prior to the mayor and the, and our current auditor, those were not always the principles that we practice here in the city and the issues for. So, so I would just urge everyone, as you do the budgeting process, to remember those four principles. Now, for those of you who may say, well, that's Alan Davis talking. Well, it's, it is, but you can look at physical caution, and you can, you look at the sixteen financial health indicators that are right out of the state auditor's website. And those principles are what drive those sixteen financial health indicators that we're going to be judged on. I'm not sure that I'm correct, but the auditor, I think in 2015 is the first time that they use those to judge whether we're in good shape or not. And then also the physical caution, which has been around since 2011. You know, right now, if you look at some of those, we've got some work to do to get to a point where we're not either in a negative or critical situation. So someone who budgeted for over thirty years, I do not envy you. I worked in an environment where primarily we were in increasing revenues, and it was how to expand services and how to build new facilities and maintain the local facilities. Here having to be able to, I mean, not necessarily this year, but the last few years, is in a decreasing revenue, which is a much, much different situation. So good luck, and try to remember those four principles.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next.
Honorable, I'm 11256 St. Street. And briefly, the day I see that we're amongst our drug treatment program here at the, Mr. Ford Grant has already quite properly. I find this a little confusing that we would start this enterprise when we have not yet figured out how we're going to handle the homeless shelter situation. We've never gotten that one. We do not, they are in violation now, and always have been. But we do not enforce our codes. They're already on the book. So here we go with drug treatment programs. And he's always said that his treatment houses will house five persons. Someone must have told him that this is legal, but it's not because if you read the code, that does not work. That if these people, I assume, will be transient, and have to live the rest of their life, or in the foreseeable future in these things for a couple of years. So they're transients. So it's a whole different ballgame here. The other thing is we are not able to do a legitimate job at present. How or by would this city proceed without clear rules and regulations for these things? And I think some good intentions and charity will not fix this problem. We will, what we will do is cause more misery and property value declines in our older neighborhoods, because we all know there are neighborhoods where these places will not fail and there are places will not where they will. The other thing that I have to say about this is that it is well-known in hospice to ourselves that most of the ODs that show up in their cars come from these drug treatment homes. That's where they come from. So I'm thinking that a lot of these places are not being professionally run. All these good intentions will not help. And one other thing that I know that was told me, and believe that I talked to one of the officers involved, he had to return one of these patients back to the drug treatment facility. And since there were several felonies inside there with warrants and such that were being protected, they decided to search the place. They've got drugs, they've got death locks in the basement. So, you know, and I see that we've gotten $100,000 for treatment of some sort. I'm sure that it won't look that way, but we have $100,000. I think we have a jump on the purpose of that. I think we start with that and then the rest of it. This can't just be something that people do because they feel that this is a charity or good thing to do. It is, but you have to know what you're doing and to see no proof that we haven't yet.
Oops.
I'm Richard Johnson, 131 Yableh Horser Drive, and I am the director of the committee. I'm sorry, but I failed to recognize the commitment of my 1115. I've been working day and night to want to do that. The other thing I wanted to mention is I do have a revised capital treatment plan that reflects what the costs that were involving here on Water Street. What if we provide a five-year capital treatment plan? If you will look back in your annual reports, you will find that I include the five-year capital treatment plan in each report. And I have, for quite some time, been carrying the repairs for Water Street as the number one item, not that means anything, but it was the number one item that we need in working out. And I've been carrying that in five years. So anybody wants one of these? A chance to look at that, if you have any questions. I'll be glad to answer them when you can get any calls. I know you have a big chance to look at and say, but I have any further questions? I will switch hats now and put on my citizen cap. Over the weekend, I had an opportunity to be in the same place for a convention that involved a lot of public people from all around. When they saw that I was from Chillicothe, Ohio, I probably received at least five comments about Chillicothe. Did we hear something about them in the news? And I have to say that I felt like Peter the Knight, Jesus hated, and that I was disappointed. Is that not wrong, Frank? The point being, I just wanted to let everybody know that number one, I think, our police department and council administration are doing a great job of trying to get things into control. But the point is, they know where Chillicothe, Ohio, is in the city. They've heard about us.
Anyone else to see?
My name is William Berger. I live at 373 The Keller. I've been in front of this council several times on this issue. It's called recycling. For the last three and a half years, this mayor, this council, has dubbed up it to promote or encourage recycling in the city. To me, recycling is a win-win situation for the city. But it seems like people on that side of the rail don't see, don't understand that. I'll go to the next subject. The city's, over the next few years, is going to have to get out of the garbage business because it's costing us about $816,000 a year to pick up garbage. And I can't believe we can't work out a deal with Trump, he wastes money, to get it done cheaper than that. That's your call. And also, I see where the city put up. I don't know if they had to do this by law or what, but they put up a gate east of us with the bridge. So when the water gets high over the walk path, they close the gate. Well, the water's only got up on the water, or on the walk path, once in the last seven years. So if the city wasn't required to put the gates up, I feel we wasted a lot of money there. Next thing is the steps coming up to the floodwalk. The Rotary Club offered to do the steps at the pump house, no charge to the city. Does the city buy all that? I guess they'd rather spend the taxpayers' money.
Anyone else to see? We see none. Yes.
Which one are we recording or we?
Uh? The Rotary Club, each side of their pump house. Just get a little Telly shirt. We'll say about you.
Move close audience participation now and move on to other business. Any other business?
I just have a question from Nancy, not you. The downtown limits. Is this something that we should consider when we get these requests to go inside the people? And, you know, I don't have any. I know it's not going to be a problem to show anyone dark colors making custom making this wrought iron, and it's going to be beautiful, but I'm thinking down the road, should there be some kind of interview?
It might be something the GRB wants to consider. The Ohio Liquor Commission has very strict guidelines as to what casks to be put there. So it can't, it can't be just ones of plastic fence. I mean, they, they have very strict guidelines to guide them, but it could be something the GRB wants to put in there. I don't believe they have anything that addresses that in their rules right now.
No, and there are two additional items that come top of the line. One of them is the feather flags that being used to order. Now, you know, had any guidelines as far as them, because the second one would be if there's sidewalk usage, how they prepare to be some uploads that needs also unproven review. So I think that it's time for GRB to address some of the four items that are just not normal in the community. I'm starting to see many items that need to be addressed.
I hate to, I hate to put that down, but, um, well, I could, I could go really long. I think that it might be worthwhile to look at more permanent discussions with the, especially on this side of the table. I think that certainly it's a more actual, we're discussing next year.
Other all business? Mr. Trudgill?
State President, I'm Al Horro. I believe we need to make every effort to start a paving project in Swood in 2015. Swood Hills people attended a community meeting at Allen School. There were more people at that meeting than where all the other community meetings go together. They also, two times, voted for letting. Both times, the people at Swood Hills voted for the passage of that letting because their street needs that support and condition. We owe it to them, you know, and I'm their councilman. And you're going to hear from me, everyone, about getting this done. I got it off at the end of the year, and my God, I think it's fairly fair to them to hand me this project. They expect it to be done. They know right now that $2 million has been talked about in this project underway. And they expect that to be done this year. I need to, uh.
Other all business?
I left out my report, but I did want to create three big rule for items from five and six, which is, we did that. I will be asking if you prefer time with three big rule. I just wanted to announce that, if you have any questions.
Other business? Positions and correspondence for the third.
President, I'm Al Horro. The only thing I received was a letter from the Ohio EPA addressed to the mayor and the council concerning the Chillicothe wastewater treatment act used to be notice violation. This is a self-monitoring report violations that they have listed from May 2014 to May 2015. And it discusses the methods and beats and fine efforts. I did distribute.
New business? Seeing none. Are there additional clearly dates that link into the council?
There is a tenth of special.
There is a tenth of special, uh, so this is a commission meeting, seriously, tenth of part.
At transit. That brings us to the last station.
Third reading of an ordinance authorizing the removal of the school designation for traffic control in all school traffic signage relating to the now-closed Western Elementary School and Smith Middle School within the city of Chillicothe, Ohio. Third reading.
Will call on the ordinance.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
Ordinance has passed. Item number two.
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing the appropriate city officials to add traffic controllers located within the city of Chillicothe to the city's property insurance policy at an initial cost of sixty-two-hundred, sixty-two dollars fifty cents, and declare an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Tucker? Roll call on the motion to wait three-reed rule.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
The three-reed rule has been waived. Will call on the ordinance.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty thousand dollars for the extension of an eight-inch water vein to the east side of North Grid Street at Oak Town Road, and declare an emergency. Second reading.
Item number four.
Second reading of an ordinance appropriating funds for the implementation of an off-site data backup solution for the city income tax department, and declare an emergency. Second reading.
Item number five.
Second reading of an ordinance declaring certain vehicles obsolete or not needed, and authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell said vehicles simultaneously with the purchase lease of three new vehicles, and declare an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Crawford.
This time I'd like to expect to re- wait three-reed rule.
Second by Mr. Tattman. Will call on the motion to wait three-reed rule.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
Will call on the ordinance.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number six.
Second reading of an ordinance reallocating funds originally appropriated for the purchase of one police cruiser to be used for the lease purchase and outfitting of three cruisers for the Chillicothe Police Department. Appropriating funds from the Law Enforcement Trust fund to cover the balance due on the cruisers, and declare an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Crawford.
This time I'd like to ask to re- wait three-reed rule.
Second by Mr. Tattman. Will call on the motion to wait three-reed.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
Motion carries. Will call on the ordinance.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing the administration to hire two additional police officers appropriating seventy-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars forty-six cents for salary and fringes, and declare an emergency. Second reading.
This is great. I would like to request, like, three-reed rule, please. Second by Mr. Davis. Will call on the motion to wait three-reed.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Most definitely, yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
Motion to wait three-reed has carried. Will call on the ordinance, please.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed two million dollars of notes by the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of improvements to various city roads, including sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and all necessary occurrences, and declare an emergency. First reading.
Item number nine.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, I do want to note that those are dated July, so we will need to amend with that note to call the Mr. Taylor. I apologize, though. We have two Taylors on the council.
Yes, I have. Luke, do you want to pull us with the lighter, as far as three-read?
So, three reads takes us to, um, the second versus...
Well, if we get a second read, it's going to be...
It'll essentially give you ways to do two more reads, and push back the issuance another month.
So, we should go ahead with...
If you want to get work done this year, I'd like to get this.
Thank you, Mr. Tattman. I'd like to request this time that we wait three-reed.
Second by Mr. Floraema. Will call on the motion to wait three-reed.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
Will call on the ordinance.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
The ordinance has passed. Item number nine.
First reading of an ordinance establishing new traffic lane patterns and implementing angle parking on South Hank Street between Main Street and Fifth Street. First reading.
Item ten.
First reading of an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, requiring the repair of a concrete sanitary sewer line on East Water Street, appropriating the sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from unappropriated sewer funds for said repair, and declare an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Tattman, I do mind, uh, the report of the seriousness of this, going to get a chance tonight, I request a three-reed. Second by Mr. Paul. Will call on the motion to wait three-reed rule.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
Motion carries. Will call on the ordinance.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item eleven.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy dollars for coating the clarifier wheels and interior at the wastewater treatment plant, and declare an emergency. First reading.
Item twelve.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating the sum of fifty thousand dollars to rehab water wells number twenty and number twenty-two, and declare an emergency. First reading.
Item thirteen.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and adopting the revised city drug and alcohol testing policy for the transit department, and declare an emergency. First reading.
This is Tattman. Due to the fact that they need this asking of the council, right, and it was, um, actually, second by Mr. Paul. Will call on the motion to wait three-reed rule.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
Motion carries. Will call on the ordinance.
Ames.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Tuck.
Yes.
Ordinance has passed. Mr. Tuck.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is it...
Before?
Yes, ma'am.
I made a mistake. Civil service is next week.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, next fourth Thursday, yes, by popular service.
Transit.